Well, I'm at a country club, but then they decided that she was in a different district, she was in a different district, so they moved it to...
Yeah.
What else?
And we had to cut the music programs, there's no band.
I'm already winding up.
You better wind up for 50 bucks.
I hope you got a headline.
Yeah, including gift donation like this, it's high on my list.
Five minutes, five minutes, please.
Thank you, Dave.
Hey, Dave, is this one gonna be on TV?
We're gonna try, Mark. The sense of the hamster meeting.
We will thrill them, Dave, the thriller in Manila.
We're gonna try.
Are you guys, are you guys prepared to... Hey, Mary, are you, those guys out there not talking, are you prepared to talk about the amendment or the offer?
Uh huh.
Okay, I'll introduce and turn it over to you then.
Okay.
Did anything get transmitted formally other than us walking out of the meeting last night?
No, I acknowledge.
I did get this morning, first thing, what I would consider to be an official phone call from Tom Masson.
Okay.
I didn't get it in writing, but I got a correspondence of what the official social media platforms are reporting on the subject as well.
Yeah, it seems like there ought to be something written to us.
You've been watching too many of these Easter programs. Tablets and all that stuff.
We're not like a school committee, we don't gotta demand a written offer before we meet, before we meet to agree to a call.
The notion, the thought came to mind last night when they were chatting.
About what?
Well, they were willing to give this informal thing, and I said, wait a minute.
Last time around.
Gotta be formal. Okay, Dex, thank you.
Dave, I ended up catching a lot of classic art showcase last night, it was great. We didn't even start it.
We weren't happy either.
But notice he didn't tell anybody last night, that way they went along thinking they were on the air. And you should do that again tonight, Dave, too.
It would've ended at 9:30 if you told them.
He never came in and said, by the way, folks, they would've cut down on speeches. Who? Yeah.
He was on a bit of a short leash though tonight, he said he's got one hour.
I'm planning on one minute, but we can finish this quickly.
That's all. Honestly, this could be a five-minute conversation.
Exactly.
Very, very simple question, do you wanna go with the warrant you got, or do you wanna amend on the town meeting floor, or do you wanna...
Good evening and welcome to the March 29, 2016, special select board meeting on the budget, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, this, I think, is about the 18th or 19th budget meeting we've had this year, so we welcome you back, in case you're a serial follower of our activities. Last night, we attended a school board meeting, at that meeting, the schools talked about their budget and the funding of full-day kindergarten, at that meeting, they did make a proposal to the select board, and tonight, we'll be talking about that proposal and considering a counter offer or action thereof. At this point, if we, do we have any select board comments before we start the meeting tonight? No comments? We have any resident comments? Michelle? Yeah, come on up to the mic, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle Gradsky, by 34 Pinewood Drive, first of all, thank you all so much for all the hard work that you've put in for the town and the schools, I really appreciate it, I've been watching whatever meetings that I haven't been at, I've been watching videos of, so I really appreciate it, I know you're working hard in that, you're trying to do what you can, that's best, do what's best for the town. I'm here as a resident, and not as a school committee member, but I was watching the video from 316, from your meeting on 316, and I just wanted to clarify one question that was asked that came up, and I know Paul, you spoke with Tom today, so you might, there was a question from Paul about our budget and our FTEs, and the question was whether or not there was a change in last year and to the proposed budget for this year, and there, it is not staying the same, there are, there's a proposed reduction of 7.26 FTEs, so I just wanted to make sure that that was, I think you've gone through all the line items at this point, but I wanted to clarify that.
Okay, I'm sorry, 7.26...
7.2641 FTEs, I can read you Mr. Mazza's explanation, which is a lot better than...
We don't need all the decimal points, right? 7.26 FTEs.
Full-time equivalents.
From FY16 to 17? From FY16 to the budget?
That's proposed for 17. Did I get that right?
Yeah, from current, current.
Thank you. Okay, so it didn't stay the same.
Do you know what the number, like, the overall number is on each end of it?
Yes. The final FY16 budget was adopted with 448 full-time equivalents, during the year, they added three F, full-time equivalents with, so bringing them to...
451.
459, and then reducing that by the 7.26, which would result in a net reduction of 4.26. I don't know if I'm quoting that right, I didn't have much time to comb it over. I have a document that shows everything, and I think Paul can probably speak to it better than I can.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Any other resident comments? Steven, Paul, you guys wanna come?
You're on, sir.
Seeing no other resident comments, I think we'll turn it over to our town manager and CFO, and they'll start in the discussion. Steven had correspondence with the school CFO today, and I, and corresponds with Paul Paster, town CFO, so why don't I let you take it, Steven, and you explain where we're at.
Thanks, Richard, I need to confess that I did not watch or attend the meeting, but I know some of you did, you and Mark did attend, but I did receive a call from Assistant Superintendent Mazza today to talk about a revised budget proposal that the schools debated, I think, at length, and if I misquote it, let me know. So basically, as, I think, just to bring everybody back to the start here a little bit, the budget that is, that was approved by the select board at its last regular meeting on the 21st, that is now in the almost final draft of the warrant, showed a gap of $125,000 between what the schools had, what the committee had approved, and what the town, what the select board was recommending, was recommending funding for the schools. We got to that point, as Richard noted at the outset, after many hours of discussion, there's been a lot of dialogue between the schools and the town side, both administratively and at the elected official level, I know they've come to our meetings, we've gone to theirs, and it's been really, if nothing else, I think, a positive demonstration of willingness to at least hear each other about what our priorities are, I know, I think more than a quarter of the school committee attended our budget forum, which I thought, I hadn't seen that since I've been here, so I think it, you know, I think it's, no one can say that we haven't had the chance to be heard on either side, I think the bottom line is the bottom line, and that is that there is just, the budget is extremely tight for reasons that we've gone over at length, so that I won't delve back into them at this point. So, the school committee, we did the budget, and we communicated with the school committee that there was a $125,000 gap, and I think we had stated that we had requested that they reconsider their budget and perhaps compromise on that amount, so we could publish a warrant that has budget numbers, the school committee's budget, no matter what it says, is gonna be published in the warrant booklet, but the article that gets introduced, that's published, will be the select board's budget, when it gets introduced, when the motion is made on town meeting floor, it'll include the school's number, but then, as per tradition, the select board then amends it, and the debate proceeds on the select board's budget. So, that's all kind of a long lead-in to the fact that the choice that the school committee was considering, or the change they were considering, was adjusting their budget downward by $125,000, so the warrant booklet and the article itself would be in line, and we would go into town meeting with a budget that is essentially the same on the town side as it was in schools, hopefully mitigating any floor conflict for town meeting. So, the schools, I'm told, did debate this at length, and basically have responded with, they amended their budget in a manner that, I guess, if you're saying it differently, would be considered a counterproposal, and what they did was they basically amended the budget to include a retained earnings balance of about $48,000 in the parking fees account that has been collected over the years, that could then be used to offset directly costs incurred by the Department of Public Works in their care and custody of that parking lot, which is what the user fees were originally intended for, so that is, it's appropriate, and I think we got away from assessing that account, especially during the new high school project and after, but that would be kind of returning to a practice of assessing that account for actual cost to provide, you know, groundskeeping, snow removal, you know, drainage, maintenance, things like that, that are associated with the student parking lot. They also had a reserve balance of about $50,000 in their school choice account, and they offered to include that, or add that, if you will, or, I don't know if it was an add or a reduction, but throw that in as additional revenue, that it hadn't been included as revenue in their budget, to bridge the gap even further, so if you take theoretically $48,000 in DPW general fund expense, and pay for those expenses with the parking lot fees retained earnings, and then you take $50,000 in school choice, and put that back into the school budget as revenue, thereby freeing up $50,000 in general fund revenue that could then go back to the town side, and I hope I'm doing this right.
Close enough.
All right. That leaves us now with a new gap, a new deficit, if you will, of $27,000, so, and that is 98 minus 125, or 125 minus 98. So, earlier, I did, we did talk about how we could fill that gap, the question, I think, before the board is simply, do you want to make that adjustment to the town budget that's been approved now, and then we can make the change to the warrant before it goes to the printer, or do you want to stick with what you have, continue the dialogue, and basically make the adjustment on the floor of town meeting? I don't know if I accurately summarize the questions, I don't know if that's what you're understanding of what it was, so, all right, well, good. I put that all together on third-hand, so, good.
Go ahead.
I'd like to state what you said, Steven, in a slightly different way, if I could.
Yeah, definitely.
The budget as we proposed it for the town meeting called for the school department to be funded from general revenue in the amount of $33,78,629.
You say it again, Mark.
$33,78,629, that's what we had put in the budget. The school committee's budget had asked for $33,203,629, the difference is $125,000. Last night, my understanding was, and I was there, and I asked for clarification and received it, that the school committee has now amended their budget formally, so that their budget now is $33,153,629, and they're asking that that be placed into...
Again, can you say that again?
And they're asking that that amount go into the warrant as our recommended budget. In order to do that, we would need to find an additional $75,000 in the town general revenue budget. The school committee has offered to allow the town's general revenue expenses to charge up to $48,000 to be paid by the high school parking fund. And if we did that, we would need to reduce one of our expense line items, which I assume would be that Department of Public Works general fund line item, which is right now around $3.49 million, by $48,000, because we'd have to reduce our expenses by that, and then we'd have to find $27,000 somewhere else to reduce our expenses by, or increase revenue somewhere by $27,000. But the difference is reducing, or changing the school appropriation from general funds by $50,000, lowering our Department of Public Works, I believe that's the line item, by $48,000, with the approval to fund some of the, what they do, whether it's, whatever it is related to the parking lot, I'm gonna say snow removal, but it's more than that problem, but there's still a $27,000 shortfall. And the question is, we need to take that out of some line item somewhere, and the way I look at the budget is, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 line items, of which 4 are untouchable, because I'll assume we can't take it out of debt service, we can't take it out of our solid recycling or our water and sewer, because we can't move those one way or the other, those are based on enterprise funds, so we've gotta take it out of either general government, public safety, planning and community development, Department of Public Works, or community and cultural services, one of those five line items has to be reduced by $27,000. And that's the question, do we wanna do that or not?
All right.
Well, I'm gonna put something on the floor, I move that we accept the compromised budget, and that we cut the fire truck fund by $27,000.
Sure, second animal? Second for discussion.
I feel that the school committee, and we have worked really hard on a difficult budget this year, in trying to cover all-day kindergarten, as well as the increase in healthcare that was huge, and I really appreciate the hard work they've done, and I feel we should accept the compromised budget, we've, for now, going on the third or fourth year, we've come together on a compromised budget on the floor every single year with the school committee, and I think $27,000 is definitely doable, I know we did a lot of cuts ahead of time for this, I did look at the fire truck fund, and we shifted some extra money into it this year, I know that it's technically underfunded as it is, but I feel we're not gonna have to ask the CFO and the town manager to go back and start cutting departments again, I think that's going to be the best way to do it, I do not wanna use free cash, I feel even though we used the free cash for the hundred, it was a one-time thing, because we were going to get reimbursement from the state, as Mark Gold recommended, and so I would feel more comfortable doing it from the fire truck fund.
Mark?
Alex, go ahead. So, I have a couple of questions, then I have a comment, so, I'm looking at the spreadsheet, and the last, for, under, this is the overview one, okay, and it has uses summary, and under schools, the total, and I understand, Mark, you're differentiating between general funds and overall funding, but the number that is under schools was $36,043,795.
Right, but there's other, there's special school revenue.
I understand, I just wanna make sure, I'm just clarifying, so just hold, hold up, I'll let Paul get to where I am. Okay, so, my understanding was that as of, you know, our last meeting, that no matter what we decided, we had to put in the warrant the number that they arrived at, which, according to their presentation, was $36,168,796, which of course may or may not be what we advocate on the town floor, so, if I'm understanding it correctly, that's the number that would've gone into the warrant, is that correct or not correct?
The amount that we put in the warrant is actually the amount that comes from the tax levy.
Okay.
And it is not the full amount that includes their special revenues, although we do show the special revenues below that.
Okay.
In there, we do show that.
Yeah.
The amount that we're really talking about is the amount that comes from the tax levy.
All right.
Thirty-three million, so on and so forth.
Town meeting votes on the tax levy stuff.
Okay, so, okay, so what would have been in the warrant would have been $33,203,629 prior to their meeting last night?
Correct.
Okay, and then they amended that to $33,153,629?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what would be printed right now if we did nothing?
Yes.
Okay, so, so getting to the substantive question of how to make up the $27,000, I would propose using $27,000 of the unused levy, I mean, we have $29,000 that were short, I mean, that's another way of doing this.
Is that an amendment?
Well, I mean, I'm putting it out there for discussion.
No, I'd put it as an amendment if you wanna go into discussion on it.
I'd just like to address it first, I don't know, Alex, if you saw the email that I had sent to Steven that was forwarded to the select board?
Right.
It's in regard to a very big drop all of a sudden in the motor vehicle excise, the commitment number two numbers.
Okay.
I am not worried about our so-called conservative estimates on revenues.
Okay.
That I would not recommend any revenue changes going forward, that I think we may be short at this point in time.
Okay, so, we may, even as things stand, we may not be hitting the, we may be hitting the two and a half anyway.
Right, because of that new information on the motor vehicle excise tax, again, commitment number two was down $122,000.
Okay.
If you looked at the trend of the information I sent, it's never happened before.
Okay.
I don't wanna be alarming, but I don't want to add more of a problem by using tax levy to that.
I mean, I think, to pile on what Paul's saying, it's right now, where we are, it's much easier to control our expenditure decisions for FY17 than the revenue projections. So, if all of a sudden, the NVET or some other factor comes back, the select board does reserve the right to take the $27,000 and put it back in the fire truck fund, I would believe, online.
Right.
At a special town meeting or something like that, but I concur with Paul, we cannot mess with the revenues, because there's two ways to unbalance a budget, shorten your revenues, or spend, or overspend, and right now, we've run the risk of shorting the revenue side.
Got it.
Okay, well, all right, yeah, 'cause I know you'll probably have one more to say, but I have just a small comment, and I guess it has to do with transparency, and the fact that, you know, when we talked about the school choice budget, you know, when the school department was here, they said that they had cut that budget by $51,000, and when I asked them about it, you know, I said, are we cutting a school choice budget so that children from, you know, other communities who may be in a home that has less advantages than ours, I said, we're gonna cut that so kids from our kids, you know, so our kids would get free kindergarten, and then they assured me that they weren't cutting the program, because they spent the money on other things, like the search for the new school committee, or...
Superintendent.
Superintendent, and there was a lawsuit that they settled, but I don't understand transparency, I don't see why that comes out of the line item for school choice, and then now, they're saying they found another $50,000 in school choice, and so I'm totally confused about how that happens, but I guess when you have a budget of $33 million, $36 million, you know, there's some leeway, but, you know, I just, I'm wondering how that happens, and is school choice really gonna be affected in a negative way, and I don't know if anyone can answer that question, yeah?
With regard to school choice, it's basically, inasmuch as they are expecting a certain amount of revenue next year coming in from school choice, they also have a balance that accumulated over the years, I believe the school committee likes to keep a balance of their about a quarter of a million dollars, as their reserves, as we have reserves, they would be considered their reserves for unforeseen types of things, what they're willing to do, apparently, is not adjust their revenue stream, but to adjust the amount of reserves that they're willing to hold, and instead of the 250, they would drop that reserve amount down to 200,000.
If I could, last night, Tom, what I heard, I'm not defending it, but if I heard incorrectly, please correct me, was that there was an anticipated balance at the end of this year of $310,000 in the school choice fund, which is down from $500,000 at the beginning of the year, so you're right, they did use it, next year, they expect somewhere just over $300,000 in school choice revenue, and they expect school choice expenses of around $300,000, and so, as Paul just indicated, there would be a balance at around 300,000, and that's why they felt comfortable pulling $50,000 out of that, that line item, I believe that's what I heard last night.
They alluded to the fact that they might come at fall town meeting, if they're dreaming right now, didn't come to... they're dreaming right now, didn't come to fruition. They alluded to that at the end, too.
All right. You know, and then, I guess the other thing is, the school, you know, the school committee is making the decision about full-day kindergarten, you know. But as far as, I mean, the more stuff I read about the pressure we put on small children, I mean, I would really like to see a situation where it was optional, you know, that parents who wanted half-day kindergarten could still do half-day kindergarten. Maybe they could split it up between classrooms, so some teachers would have, like, just a few kids who came in half-day. Because I just, there's another article in the Wall Street Journal on Saturday, saying that, you know, kids are under a lot of pressure, and that it does affect them and their development. There was the article in the, the, you know, the major medical journal, too, talking about that. And like I say, you know, we, I work with a person who's 80 years old, and they're still, you know, employed, you know, four days a week. And I look at, do you really need to have kindergartners, you know, going full-time if they're going to be in the workplace till they're 80? I don't believe we need to do that. I mean, I just personally, I think that we need, I have an option for children to be children. And so if parents, you know, I don't think, I know we can't force the parents to send the kids to kindergarten, but I think it would be easier on the record if they could register as half-day students and then do that. I know we're only talking about a handful of kids, but I think once the state, you know, gets their hands on children full-time, those kids are full-time state, you know, they're connected, and their expectation is they'll be going full-time. And I know, I just approach this as a, as a person from a mental health perspective, and I know that all of the other towns have full-day kindergarten. But if we have parents in this town that want half-day, you know, I think that we should find some way to fit that in, and I would ask the school committee to consider that.
Alex?
This might be an instance where it's useful to have somebody on the select board who has young children, because I have a son who's in kindergarten right now. And, you know, so I've gone to all the meetings, I've talked to the kindergarten teachers, I've heard feedback. And what you have at the half-day, and the superintendent's talked about this, what you have to do.
Well, I think I understand that. I understand, they have more time to play and everything else.
Right, to your point, to be a kid.
But not to understand.
So during, so during those two and a half hours, they are going full-tilt.
Right.
And that's really not how kids learn best.
But they're not with brothers and sisters, they're not at the zoo, they're not, they're in a classroom. And for me, that's a big difference. I look at what happened in the eastern block. I know this is kind of off the topic, but, you know, in Czechoslovakia, Hungary, Poland, they, the state took over and took the children and told the parents, your kids have to go full-day, everything, you go to work all day. And people in those countries can't understand why Americans voluntarily give up contact time and family time to the state when they were forced to do it in those countries. And I just, you know, that's, you know, you can say all you want how it's better, I know kids do better, I'm not going to disagree with any of that, but I still think that, for me, it doesn't sit right. And I think that we're, you know, for those handful of families that can afford to spend time with their children, they don't have to both work full-time, and if they want to have kids in half-day kindergarten, I don't think they should have to have a school record that shows their kids were truant a large portion of the time, because the parents did family activities, so. I'm sure, it's up to the school department, not me, but.
Okay. Mark? Actually, I'm finding myself in the rear position, Marie. I'm going to pose the motion as written, because I don't particularly like where the money's coming from. And it's, the irony of this isn't lost on me, and that when we look at the Quint Fire Truck, you were for buying a Quint Fire Truck at all costs, and I thought that it was an expense that the town didn't need to spend. And yet I've made a commitment for the last 10 years to fund, a sinking fund into the fire truck, and I think taking $27,000 out of it is the wrong way to go. And, you know, say, well, where else can the money come from? You know, I, with all respect to everybody here, you know, we're putting, or potentially putting, you know, $800,000 into road repair, which is $400,000 or $350,000 more than, than Chapter 90 money. And without knowing the bids on roads, we could very well have a bid come in on the section we want, and it comes in $24,000 or $28,000 below how much we've allocated, because the bids are what the bids are. And I'd much rather see us take it out of something where we've significantly supplemented state aid, and taking $27,000 out of an $850,000 budget for paving seems more logical to me than taking $27,000 out of our fire department, fire truck sinking fund.
Is that a motion?
It's not. It's a, I have to vote down this motion first, I think, wouldn't I?
Well, you could do it in amendment to the motion.
It just gets overly complicated.
Okay.
Soon try to convince people to vote this down, and we'll find another motion to fund the $27,000.
Other discussion? All right.
No.
Okay. I guess I'm the only one left. I have a little different feeling on the whole thing. I think I've expressed it several times. I think we've got the town that is venturing into dangerous territory. We're violating our policies, the policies we designed and developed for the future of our town. This year, we've taken money from our capital program, and we've also taken money from our OPED program. Now, some may argue that they're bottomless pits. I'm not going to debate the merits of them being bottomless pits. I think we set sound financial management decision to implement these funds and to incrementally take them up a quarter of a percent. And now they've turned into a grab-all bag of cash, that people are easily reaching over and grabbing money out to throw it in a need, that is a new need in our community. And ladies and gentlemen, you have to understand, this is not a one-year need, this is a reoccurring need. We're talking about increasing the total outlay of our budget by, I guess, the $200,000 to $300,000 every year. This need will be funded next year. This year, we're proposing funding this with all, what they call no year, or one-year money. It's non-reoccurring. Free cash is something that refunds out of our budget each year, and once it's gone, it's gone. It's not recurring. The schools themselves are looking at taking school choice dollars. Tom himself said, it's not a good policy to take those funds. It's contrary to their management policies and how they wish to manage the schools. I consider it a financial failure of this board to take these funds. I think we're going the wrong direction, and we're backing up, we're reviewing, we're reversing everything that we felt was sound, best management practices for the long-term nature of our community. Now, we can take it, Marie wants to take it out of the automobile fund. That's free cash. That's the same money. We put money into that fund every year, it's an amortization account. Sound management philosophy says when you have major purchases like that, you incrementally put money away every year, so then you don't have to bond that account. That's a conscious decision we make. It's a good management. It's good for our bonding agency. When they look at how we run our operation, they're going to say, these are strong financial principles. So now we're starting to violate the strong financial principles that we set in place. One year may not hurt a bit, but there's a pervasive attitude that this is how we're going to fund programs. I said the very uncomfortable, very unfortunate thing here two or three weeks ago, I said, you, the schools have come to us with a, a new program that they'd like to implement, full-day kindergarten, tuition-free. And it's not mandated by the state. Right now, it's a discretionary program. Half-day is mandated by the state, and that's being taken care of. So we're being asked to fund a nondiscretionary program. And now, once we put it in, it becomes mandatory. It no longer is discretionary, and we will be ponying up this money each year. And where's it coming from next year? I ask that question to anybody in this room that would like to tell me, where is this money coming from next year? I've got the town manager, the CFO, and the distinguished member of the select board right up between me. I'd like one person to please tell me where this money's coming from. And silence goes across the room. There is no answer, because we say next year, we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul. That is the road we're going down. It's not a good road, I'm embarrassed to be going down this road. This is everything I stand against in fiscal management. You wouldn't, you wouldn't manage your homes like this, you wouldn't have a financial consultant that does business like this, you'd fire him and heart me. But yet this board is proposing it because it's easy, a simple way to make the, make the little box school away, and we take care of it. So I can't support what we're doing. I support the schools, I support what they've done in the education, I just don't support the way we're funding this. Now, one could turn around and quickly and say, well, if it's mandated next year, I say absolutely, if it's mandated next year and the governor puts it in law, that's a total different ballgame. That way, we have to turn around to our, to the town, and we say, okay, where are we going to cut operations? And if we can't cut operations, then we're going to put an override in. Because that's the only way that we can fund new reoccurring operations, is an override. And nobody wants to hear the word. But we've done it before, and we've done it with a reason. And this is a reason. You know, make no doubt about it, this is going to be slapping us in the face next year. This is not a one-year problem. We're making a $300,000 commitment against our budget. And you can ask anybody tall them up tomorrow and ask them, say, am I telling the truth? I'm telling you the truth. This is, I'm not making this up. And it really bothers me what we're doing. Not that we're doing the kindergarten program, it's how we're funding it, because we have not got serious about where this money's coming from. So I can't support it. But I can support everything we're doing, but I can't support how we're funding it. So, anyway, that's, that's all I got to say on the issue. Is there any other discussion on this issue? You, Marie?
Well, I just wondered about this $48,000 from parking, would that be occurring, would that happen every year, or is this a one-shot deal? One-shot deal.
About $5,500 bucks would be annually recurring in the fees we collect now. But they had some money built up from, like I said, largely built up over the course of the construction of this facility when.
This is a 10-year-old.
Right, they've been collecting fees on this forever.
Okay.
In fact, I'm told there's no written agreement in terms of what the, what is an eligible expense for use. I have discussed this with the schools, the school department, Tom has about it, and kind of went through what things would be eligible, so we could match up as close as possible. $48,000 in expenses that are bona fide for the maintenance of the parking lot, that would pass muster in terms of the test of user fees, which is what they are. And we're working to do that and figure out what those costs are, because if they don't equal $48,000, it's yet another cut to our Department of Public Works. Now, we're not looking to expand what we do, we're just looking to, almost like an enterprise fund, where if we do a water main, if we fix a water main break, there's street crew guys and street crew equipment and water equipment and everything else, and then at the end of it, you sort out whose time got allocated where. I think we're going to approach the parking lot work, whether it's mowing, or string trimming, or sweeping, or line painting, or whatever, and then say, whose time got allocated where, and then submit invoices, for lack of a better term, to the schools, and they would pay it, then the schools would process the payment out of that account. And I, I think there's more in expense there than people at first blush would maybe believe, because it's not just snow plowing. But we have some work to do, obviously, in our end, and make sure that we document the expenses incurred, and do so in a way that does not stretch the boundaries of what is, you know, financially, I say financially, but what is really, what is really not going to end this, end us up with a note in our management letter. This is really, is really where this is all heading. If we, if we stretch the boundaries of what constitutes an actual expense for the parking lot, then our auditor's going to pick up that, on that, and we're going to get dinged in our management letter. And we can all see this coming. I mean, everyone, it's a cut of $48,000 to the DPW budget. It's our job to do everything we can within the rules to get as much of that $48,000 back on work that we, on the time we spend out here, which is a lot, we spend a lot of time out here. But there's a risk to be run with that. I mean, and I think, you know, to Richard's comment, you know, how are we going to do this next year? I think the big problem, and I want to preface this by saying, you know, we've worked really hard to get to this point. I think we have not had a battle of different policy ideals with the schools. I think everyone has said, we've all committed from the beginning to want to work together. I have done that since I got here. It's been important to me to work with the schools and keep open communication, because town meeting conflicts get inefficient and expensive. But today, when I, when I was discussing the outcome of last night's meeting, I, after kind of thinking about, okay, what are we going to do, I thought, you know, how did we get here? You know, why are we here? Because we're now really making decisions, choices, both sides, schools and town are now making choices that involve using one-time money for recurring expenses, which we have preached certainly since I got here, and I know Paul's been preaching it forever, is a bad idea, there's policies on both sides against doing it. And so I, having been here for the meetings, I understand how we got, how we got here. What I, what kind of, I, lost me today was why did we get here? And I don't want to go backwards, for sure, we don't have time, we have to public, we have to send a printer, it's going to go out to everybody's house, I mean, we don't have time to go backwards. But I just think, next year, the real struggle is going to be, if the school committee says, we're going to go up 2.5%, and the town side says we go up 2.5%, which is how we start with our October budget meetings, we just say, everybody's going up 2.5%, we're still going to be out of balance. We have gotten ourselves out of balance in terms of town side versus school side, policies versus operations. I believe we have gotten $350,000 out of balance. If everyone says we're going up 2.5% next year, that balance is not only going to be there, it's going to be compounded, because we've now spent this one-time revenue that's not going to be there next year. And I just, I'm not trying to be, like Paul, I'm not trying to be alarmist or doomsday-sayer, but, you know, even if what the schools say is true, and we get $100,000 in additional Chapter 70 revenue from state, it's still 250. And like I said, I'm not, I, I think we've all fought hard to get to the point we're at right now, and I, like I said, I don't want to go back, and I think everyone has, everyone still remains involved in this process with the best of intentions. I really believe that. But I've been trying to talk about money, not policy or principle, all the way through, because ultimately, that's what this is about, it's about money. And I feel like when I asked myself, why did we get here, it was clear it wasn't about the money. And so I, so to answer your question, Richard, I don't know how we're going to do it next year, all I can tell you is it's going to be harder than it was this year.
Mark? Yeah, all right. Stephen, I appreciate your comments. I guess my take on this is, whether it's $27,000, but I think it's really $75,000 that the town is taking a haircut on here, to use the vernacular, because that $48,000 is one-time money, and it's not the right thing to do. But we've got a $65.5 million operating budget, a $67 million overall budget. And I'm trying not to be too insulting to anybody who went through the process here, but somebody's got to step up and say, we're talking about $75,000 out of $67.0 million overall operating budget. But just swallow hard, hold your nose if you have to, you know, and, and vote for this thing, because I can't see going to town and arguing over $60,000, $75,000 when we've got much bigger issues. And my sense is that when we get to town meeting, this is going to pass pretty quickly, and notwithstanding comments that we may get from people who clearly disagree with the way we've done it, we're going to end up spending the bulk of the town meeting on, on other things that are lesser money and, you know, maybe no money at all. But like I said, I'm voting temporarily against the current, current motion, because I think $27,000 out of the fire truck fund is improper, and I just want to correct my numbers. It's, it's actually $550,000 we have in pavement preservation, plus the expected $450,000 that we get roughly from Chapter, Chapter 90 money, is that it? So we've got about $1 million. So I'd rather take $27,000 out of a million for pavement than $27,000 out of $100,000 for what we know to be a fire truck that we need. So that's why I'm voting against it.
Any other discussion?
One last discussion, as we had $50,000 in there, at the last minute, we had some leftover, we decided not to do the high school project, so we shoved a little bit more, it was more than the 27, so I think that was money we wouldn't have allocated for it anyway. So I recommend we do a vote before we lose a member.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Okay. Could you please rewrite the motion, or reread the motion?
Marie's motion?
Yeah. Yeah. Marie, do you remember what it was?
I moved to accept the compromise budget and.
Cut the fire truck fund by $27,000.
Cut the fire truck fund by $27,000.
Okay, so you'd fund the 27,000 of the fire truck. Okay, no further discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passed.
Do we need to reopen the warrant to make the changes?
Yep. I think we can reopen the warrant, I'll take a motion to reopen.
I move we reopen the warrant.
Take a second. Take a second. Alex?
Second.
Second, okay. Motion's, the warrant's open.
I'd like to make a motion, amend the amendment, amend the motion, amend the warrant as follows. Article 8 amends the schools to $33 million, 153,629. And adjusts the bottom number appropriately. And on Article 9, we take the fire truck replacement contribution from 92,110 down by $27,000 and adjust the.
Lower public works, too.
That's right, we're going to have to lower the public works by $48,000.
Okay, did you get that, Debbie?
No.
Did we have to move, did we have to vote on the opening of the warrant?
We did.
Oh, we did, okay.
No, you've.
I thought.
We didn't vote.
Okay, all in favor of the warrant?
Motion.
Okay, warrant's open. I'm sorry, I thought we'd open it.
So reducing the public works by 48,000, that's the $3,493,417, is going to go down $48,000, correct, Paul? The schools will go up to $33,153,629. I assume that the raise and appropriate, Paul, stays the same, the rest of the motion stays the same, we're still going to raise and appropriate.
That's going to increase by $27,000.
Right, but we're going to adjust down in Article 9, the raise and appropriate.
Right, you'll decrease it in Article 9.
Right, by the fire truck.
You want to give a round?
Sure, there are three changes, Debbie. In Article 8, which is the budget, we're going to reduce the public works line item by $48,000. We're going to increase the school department line item by, I believe it's, I'm just trying to think, $75,000?
School's going up 75.
$5,000. And in Article 9, we reduce the fire truck replacement line item by $27,000 and make all the other adjustments in those articles necessary.
Take a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
And just to be clear, the number that's going to be in the warrant for the schools is $33,153,629.
Right. Is that correct, Mr. Paul?
That's what I just put in.
Yeah, that's what he just put in. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion to close the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
So moved, second, all in favor? Okay, warrant's closed, motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait.
I'll take a second, Mark's motion.
And all motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, is there a second on the motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
And then close the warrant, who made that motion?
Mark did, I think, and I seconded it.
Parliamentary, we're moving faster than Debbie can record.
That's a first.
Yeah, that's right.
And then I think we all voted on it, voted to close the warrant, everyone voted.
Yeah, we all voted to close the warrant, I could support that.
Waiting for a second.
And I'll second Tom's motion to end the meeting.
Okay, we've got adjourned a second, any other, any discussion on adjournment? I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, I realize it was a quick meeting, but we got it over with. I thank you for putting up with us, and ladies and gentlemen at home, I thank you for putting up with us. All in favor of adjourn? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I can't tell you when our next meeting is, but it'll be on a Monday night, I just haven't checked my calendar, so, but I'm sure you can check it, and we'll see you then.
Next Monday.
Next Monday, next Monday. Can I go quite quickly? Have a good evening, ladies and gentlemen.